Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for March 21st at 6:25 p.m. Note that we do have a quorum and we have four items on our agenda, the first being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for March 7th.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to agenda items for consideration, we have number two, an operator's license for Wendy M. Sheehan, and we'll have a presentation by the chief. Welcome, welcome.
Good evening. Unfortunately, I come to you tonight recommending a denial of the operator's license for Ms. Sheehan. Having in front of you the memo, I'll kind of work backwards. In November of 2016, Ms. Sheehan was arrested for manufacturing and delivery of heroin and in March of 18 was convicted in Fond du Lac Circuit Court. She was sentenced to two and a half years in state prison, followed by 15 years of extended supervision. Ms. Sheehan was released from prison early in March of 20. However, in July of 20, she was found collapsed in the roadway on Barton Avenue next to an open driver's side door of a running vehicle in gear. She was identified as the person operating the vehicle and was incapacitated. Because of her condition, she was conveyed to hospital by rescue. She became resistive, struggled with officers and medical professionals, including spitting in the face of a West Bend police officer. She was arrested for the second violation of first offense, operating while intoxicated and discharging bodily fluids on a police officer. Her blood alcohol level at the time was .266, more than three times the legal limit. She was convicted of that OWI in December of 20 in municipal court. I believe because of that, she was returned to prison to finish the rest of her sentence in November of 20, where she remained until released January of '22 and returned to extended supervision. Similar to one of our last applicants, it is one of her rules to not possess or consume alcohol. She's not to be in the premise of any establishment whose primary purpose is for the sale or distribution of alcohol, including but not limited to bars, taverns, liquor stores, and beer tents. Unlike our last time in front of you, this time probation and parole is not in favor of her being afforded a license. They're asking us to relate to you that they would be in favor of you denying that license. Understand they have rules that they follow. I was a little confused myself, spoke to the supervisor about why she was allowed to submit for the license, and I don't have a great answer for you of that, other than that's the information that I have to bring in front of you tonight, and I am strongly recommending we deny the operator license for Ms. Sheehan.
Thank you, chief. Here's Ms. Sheehan, audience.
Hi.
If you'd like, you can come on up to address our board. Let us know what's on your mind.
Look, I'm not here to say I've never made any mistakes in my life. I clearly have. This isn't just about being able to serve alcohol. Yes, I've been to prison. Yes, again, I've made some mistakes. This is more about an opportunity to do more than just be a server or bartender at a restaurant. There's opportunities for growth in managerial positions, which I definitely am looking into. My PO, I talked to him about it, and this isn't anything he was opposed to when I discussed it with him. So, I don't know where that information is coming from. I kind of feel like this is more of a personal vendetta from West Bend Police Department just because of my charges. Those things that happened, happened almost two years ago now. And yes, the manufacturing and delivery was, what, five, six years ago now? I'm not expecting you to approve it. Honestly, if they want it denied, you're gonna do what you want, and I'm sure you'll go in their favor, but it's more than just being, serving some alcohol or whatnot. I have, like, being intoxicated in my car. I've never failed it. I've never failed a drug test. I'm not out there purposely trying to be bad or do wrong. So, I would like you to at least consider it. My work knows about everything, and again, so does my PO. I just had a discussion with him about it and that I would be appearing here tonight. So, I would greatly appreciate you considering it at least. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, I guess I'll just comment quick that, you know, we don't always follow, you know, whatever the guidance is by our police department. We do take into account, you know, people who show up and their comments, their ideas, and that feedback, and the conversations that we have from this board. That being said, I'll point out that, you know, it does say right here on our report from the Department of Corrections that, you know, you're not supposed to be even on the premises of an establishment whose primary purpose is to distribute alcohol. So, that's my concern. It's not that you, I don't see potential in you, and I don't appreciate you being here. I would just worry about putting you in that situation. That's...
It's not just a bar. It's a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
A bar.
Yep. I understand.
It's not that I'm just working in a bar.
Yep. We do have a couple other people there on our licensing board though, so...
Can you step up to the mic, please? I have a question. The question that you're work, or the place that you're working in is a restaurant, correct?
Correct.
Which means even if you do not get this license, you still will have your job, correct? It just means you're not able to move up the ladder quicker than what you anticipated moving.
Well, right. The idea was, is there will be two new restaurants opening, and they wanted to start in-house as for, like, promoting people up. And even with that being said, I would not be able to do any kind of managerial position without having my operating license.
Yep, I understand. Again, I have to go with a denial because of the fact, this is really a serious offense, and it would put you in a very precarious situation by having you involved within the area where there's alcohol and being in charge afterwards like you are looking forward to. I don't want to be in that position to put you in that situation, so I guess I'm asking for you to be very patient and continue to follow what you are doing right now. And if you come back next year and we have no problems and you continue to follow the straight and narrow like you are right now, I would not probably have any issues with granting you a license next year. But I'm gonna have to, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna have to deny it, but I hope you hang in there, continue to move forward in the straight and narrow. I would be very happy to see you back next year. I appreciate you being here and at least giving me, giving us your version of why you want to move up. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. It's been motion second to deny. All those in favor, settle of denial, same by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I will remind you, Wendy, just so you know, this is just a recommendation to common counsel, which meets later on tonight. I'll warn you, we do have a few other agenda items that we're gonna be hitting on before we get to yours, but this denial is just a recommendation to the larger body that's gonna meet here later tonight. So, if you'd like to stick around, you definitely can. Okay? All right. And with that, we'll move to number three, a secondhand article license for Premier Gold, Silver, and Coin LLC at 111 East Main Street, Ottawa, Ohio, for an event at Hampton Inn Suites in West Bend for April 5th through the 9th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second for approval. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then number four, secondhand jeweler license for Premier Gold and Silver and Coin LLC, 111 East Main Street, Ottawa, Ohio, for an event at Hampton Inn and Suites in West Bend, April 5th, April 9th through 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second to approve. All those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having no further business for the licensing board, I adjourn by the call of the chair.
I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of minutes from regular meeting, March 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections? There are none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, award contract 22-02 Laurel Drive North Reconstruction. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is to request award of contract 2202, which will be the reconstruction of Laurel Drive North between Sylvan Way and Laurel Drive South. We would be replacing existing sanitary sewer, water main, and storm sewer, as well as the road base, road pavement, curb and gutter, and some sidewalk. While we were preparing to bid this project, the Parks Department approached us because they want to construct an asphalt path in Regner Park and to connect a new parking lot and come around the future beach house to be part of the future route for enchantment in the park events. We have done this type of process in the past because it helps with the smaller project. Instead of standing alone, being inside a bigger contract, we get better prices, and so we included that portion in the contract for Laurel Drive. So, we have opened the bids on March 11, and we received four bids, which are summarized in your memo. So, the base bid is the cost to build Laurel Drive reconstruction, and the alternate is what we bid for the path in Regner Park. You can see that we received a lower bid for Laurel Drive. It was lower than the estimate that we had, and also the quote received for parks prior to us including this in the contract was higher than the estimate that, the bid that we receive in the contract. So, actually, it was a good move to put that project inside the contract to realize those savings. So, we reviewed all the bids, and we reviewed the qualifications of the low bidder, Donner Inc., and based on previous work done for the city, we find that they are capable of performing all the work in the contract. We would use previously budgeted PMP funds for the Laurel Drive reconstruction, as well as sewer and water funds for the sewer and water portion of it. And then for the Regner Park project, it would be funds from past fundraising, but also some proceeds from the mutual mall property sale, as was previously discussed within this body. So, we recommend that the board and council award this contract to Donner Inc., both the base and the alternate, for the amount listed in their bid for $1,347,032.50. And also, we recommend an allocation of contingency fund for about 5.4% of the total bid, for a total not to exceed $1,420,000 for the construction of both Laurel Drive and the asphalt path in Regner Park.
Second.
Any questions for Max? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
All right. Good evening. I would like to call to order the Finance Committee this evening. First on the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, March 7th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's. On item number two, for agenda items for consideration this evening, we have a presentation by Ellers for 2022A and 2022B borrowings, and I believe Phil Cossins is here to give the presentation. Hello.
Good evening. Nice to be with you again. We have, as you just heard, two different resolutions and two different packets. I'm gonna walk through each of those in a little bit of detail without getting into all the minutia, but keep in mind, as in previous years, this is really giving us authorization to proceed. And then if you give us authorization to proceed, that starts us down the path of contacting Moody's Investors, or Moody's, I'm sorry, S&amp;P, to go through a rating call and prepare what's called an official statement, which is like a prospectus on the city, and then we'll be back to talk about final results at a later meeting. Tonight's authorization. So, the first issue that you have in front of you is the 2022A issue, and this is for your, what was budgeted in your capital plan for 2022. So, this finances the projects that are identified to be borrowed in the capital plan. And I'm looking to move this? Okay. So, in the, so, just a few things to note under the executive summary. The dollar amount, $3,490,000, it's notes, like the city has done historically in the past, 10-year note, and the goal with the 10-year note is that gives us the maximum flexibility in how monies can be kind of moved from one project to the other, in case one bid comes in high, another bid comes in low. We have the ability to move money from one source to another. It also is a quick payback, 10 years, your financing capital expenditures over a short payback period. You're allowed to go up to 20 years on many of these capital items, so gets it paid back quicker. That's one of the rating categories that we go through with Moody's, how quickly are the outstanding obligations being paid back by the city. Under authority in this document, you can see that you have about 24% of the city's borrowing capacity that you have used, meaning that you have a lot of flexibility in the future to undertake additional projects. This will not hamstring you at all. We have a capital, we have a call date identified for this issue as well, to make sure that if rates drop, and I'll talk about rates in a little bit, because they have not been dropping, that we have the ability to refinance this debt at a later date. As we have done historically, we're gonna propose again to do this as a competitive bond sale or note sale in this case, where we'll send it out for bid to different banks, underwriters, local, regional, national underwriters that will set up the bid on the bond, so that we let kind of the whole country bid on this if they choose to set up and bid. And we have sent it out to well over 100 different banks and underwriters and try to determine then who sets up and who wants to participate in the issue. We expect that this will be what's called a premium bid, which is what we saw, I had a sale for the city of Sheboygan today. Premium bid is kind of what you see on most of these deals, where they actually provide you with more money than you ask for, and you turn around and you can use the extra proceeds to either put into your debt service fund, or you can use it to downsize the amount of the debt that's being issued. We'll have that discussion internally with staff and make a decision as to which way is the best way to go. So, as I indicated, we have about $3.4 million in projects that we're looking to finance. We have a timeline that we have established working with staff. Again, authorization tonight, we'd have a rating call in early April with S&amp;P. We would prepare that official statement. We would distribute the official statement, and then we would take bids actually scheduled for April 21st as part of the issue. What we're proposing here is a parameter sale, and we've talked about this in the past in a couple of previous issues, where we're not going to be selling the bonds on a normal customary evening of the city council. And we do that for a couple of reasons. One, and maybe most importantly, is we can move the bond sale off of Monday and Tuesday's schedule. If you look at a, I look at the bond buyer every day, that guy. So, if you look at the bond buyer every day, you'll see that Mondays and Tuesdays around the country and in Wisconsin, when most communities meet, are, have a significant slate of debt issues. You're competing against all of those debt issues, and many are rated very similar to the city of West Bend, so you're competing against similar rated, similar size, and there's always so many bidders of bonds. If we can move off a Monday, Tuesday's schedule onto a Wednesday, Thursday, it really does eliminate a lot of the competition, and we think ultimately will benefit the city with the number of bidders and potential rate that's received. Two, it allows us the ability to kind of move the sale in case we have some significant event, and we've certainly had plenty of significant events over the last couple of years. So, it enables us, if we don't have to be on a specific date night, to just say, you know what, the market went crazy yesterday, we're gonna postpone the sale, so that you're not caught up in some event that you have no control over that could move the market significantly in a day. So, we're proposing again a parameter sale that would be scheduled then for April 21st. Like we have done in the past, we do, in this document, prepare, as you can see here, a sizing. The sizing really takes a look at how we get to that dollar amount. The $3.4 million in capital is being financed with this A issue. The structure of it is on the next page that I just pulled up, page 11 of the packet, and you can see that we are maturing the principal over that 10-year period. We've estimated rates. Given what occurred today, they might be on the low side, but we'll talk about that again in a little bit. And I know this is relatively difficult to see, but what we always try to boil this down to, what is the impact on the overall debt service levy for the city? And what our goal is, is that we don't have these spikes, you know, peaks and valleys, that we keep kind of a level or dropping mill rate for debt, and that's really what's reflected on here. We do look out over the next five years and look at financing projects over the next five years and try to get back to that, what is the impact of doing the capital borrowing? So, finally, I mentioned what's happening with rates. And this is a one-year chart. It looks, well, it's significant what we've seen over the last two months. We initially saw rates starting to climb before what happened overseas due to some inflationary factors, but then we also started seeing rates increase as a result of the Fed policy of what they were projecting, that they're gonna do multiple rate increases over the next year. And now, that's been enhanced really by what's happened overseas. So, the combination of all of that has led to higher rates. If we look at it over a three- or five-year period, it doesn't look so dramatic, because we're still in relatively low interest rate environment, but it certainly has taken an impact, made an impact on what's happening in municipal interest rates. 10-year note, similar rate of community today, we saw 2.33%. When you look at that historically over a longer time period, that's still very low. It's just not what we saw six months ago, or a year ago, or two years ago, when rates were near historic lows. So, we are seeing an increase in interest rates as a result of all the different factors that I just mentioned. So, that's the A issue. Mayor, would you like me to stop with the A issue, then cover the B? Or, I'm sorry, Alderman Kennedy, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. I don't have a preference, I guess. Does anybody have questions on A? We can take A right now, then. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have motion and a second. Any further questions on the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed the $3,490,000 general obligation promissory note, series 2022A? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That Carrie's. All right, then we will head on to item number four, the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $1,225,000 in general obligation refunding bond, series 2022B. And we'll just have Phil continue.
Thank you. So, I'll start by saying this, the probability that this issue's gonna proceed is probably diminishing daily with the rates. So, when we presented this to the city, or to the city staff, we had included multiple issues that all made sense to refinance at lower rates two months ago, maybe even three months ago. Since that time, obviously, you saw what's happened with interest rates, and the reason we're doing a refinancing is just to save money due to lower interest rates. The only issue that makes any sense right now is to refinance the 2014A issue, and what that issue was, was bonds that were issued for the police facility. So, it's all levy dollars that would be saved as a result of refinancing this issue. The city has a policy that states that there needs to be a minimum threshold of savings of 3% present value savings to consider it. Why we pulled the other issues is because we didn't hit that threshold anymore, and we're bringing this one forward to you, but it's about 3.5%. It's nominal. And at this point, we'll keep an eye on it. If it makes sense, we'll move it forward. If it doesn't, we'll just pull it, and we'll work with city staff to make sure they're aware of what's happening. I'm thinking that, just knowing Carrie, and that's who I'm primarily dealing with, because she has to deal with all the accounting that comes after, if we don't at least hit the 3, 3.5%, we're gonna pull this. As of today, when I looked at their interest rates, this doesn't work, as of today, just given the bond sale that occurred earlier today, that this would fall just under the 3% threshold. So, if it's okay, this is, I'm fine with, if you're okay authorizing it in case the market corrects and we see a drop in interest rates in the short term, then we'll proceed with this, but it's, at this point, unlikely that we'll be moving this forward.
Thank you, Phil.
I'd say motion approved, then.
Okay, motion approved. We have a second.
Is the, I'll second, and then we can discuss.
Okay, so we do have a second and then discussion. And then Alderman Dolnick did have a question.
This might be moot because of what you're saying about the interest rates, but based upon the summary that we had, I was confused about something. The refunding was expected to save the city about $53,000 over the next 12 years, but when I add up the expenses, the expenses are close to $53,000. It added up to $52,388. Now, am I missing something here? Because that wouldn't really make any sense to refinance, then.
Yeah, so I did respond, I got an email from Administrator Shamo last night, and I responded to that question. I don't know if you got that back.
I didn't get the answer.
Okay, all right. I'll just give you the quick explanation.
I didn't understand the answer, rather.
Okay, all right. So, yes, there are costs associated with a separate debt issue, and the reason this has to be separated out is because this is bonds. We're over our 10-year period, and in discussing this with staff, we didn't want the other projects to be a bond issue, because if we lose that flexibility. So, it's a separate issue as the B. The refunding savings estimate of $53,000 is net of those costs. They're actual savings. The costs are built into that, so you're actually saving the $53,000 that we're projecting, and that built into that are the other fees that we're talking about. But it does raise the issue. It's, again, if we're spending this much money and we're only achieving $53,000 in savings, you know, is it worth doing? And that's why I brought it forward earlier, saying, I don't know if it's worth doing at this point. When we presented it initially to staff, it was about $120,000 worth of savings. That's how much the market has moved and has dropped that savings. While it's still right around 3%, I just, given what we're seeing in the market and how quickly rates are moving, I don't see this moving forward unless we see a correction in the market.
I think Alderman Allen had a question.
Yeah, I'm looking at the series 2022B refunding promissory note, and in there, it says 2.5%. Are we going to amend this prior to acting on it?
Oh, you're talking, yeah, that's in the, that can be found...
It's on page 32 of the packet.
Sorry, I'm not seeing page 32, but I, so, is that in the parameters? Alderman Allen, that you're reading that?
Where did I just, I just found it.
Section 2, terms of the bonds.
Yeah, section 2, last paragraph of section 2 of the terms.
It's on packet page 32. It's got the number 4 on top.
That's in the resolution? That's in the resolution?
Yes.
There you go. The present value midway down the.
Present value debt service savings achieved by refunding.
Yeah, that should have been 3%. This is, this is the resolution that was prepared by Quarles and Brady, and I think we probably had numerous discussions with them. That should be 3%. That's your policy. So we're not amending your policy. We're not asking you to do that. Perfectly clear from city staff that we need to hit the 3%. So that's, I mean, if you feel more comfortable having that as part of the motion, that's fine, but we know that we're not going to bring this forward unless it's 3%.
Alderman Model, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I just wanted to state that I guess 53,000 savings is 53,000 savings, that's the net. I mean, that's a pretty decent chunk of money, so.
Alderman Dolnick?
Well, my only concern is how much staff time will be expended out of that $53,000. That's not free staff time either. I think it's very narrow savings.
All right. Any other questions for Phil on this item? All right, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed, okay. All right, do you want to, should we do a roll call case here, or does that matter? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, that passes. Thank you, Phil.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution to accept donations to the Park, Rec, and Forestry Department, and Mike is here.
Thank you. This evening, we have three donations that will support several park and recreation priorities. The first donation is from the Early Risers Kiwanis for $5,000. The Early Risers donated $50,000 to support the Library Rec Center project. The original donation was $20,000 with a $5,000 commitment annually for six years to get to that $50,000 mark. The $5,000 this evening was for the 2021 donation. The next donation for $18 is for the archery range. We have a donation bollard out at the archery range, and people are out shooting, they can drop some coins or dollars or whatever they want in the bollard, and that's where this $18 arrived or came from. We do have an archery range account that we would request that it goes through that account that helps support the maintenance and targets and things like that out on the archery range. The third donation of $1,250 was donated by River Shore's Coverpractic for the sponsorship of the sponsorship of the 2022 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. Thank you to these sponsors for the support of our park and recreation programs. Thank you.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you to our generous donors, and go ahead.
Mike, did you have any specific plans for doing any upgrading on the archery?
That's a great question. We always do maintenance targets, someone to butt repair, things like that. Possibly early next month, we will have another donation coming before the Park Commission and the Common Council. Recently, and it hasn't gone before Park Commission yet, a local organization donated a substantial dollar amount to our archery range to support our youth programs out there. We run archery programs out there through our rec division. We do some during the day, evenings, things like that. It's kind of nice where it's not the traditional baseball soccer type of recreation, it's archery. So again, a donation like that to support a youth program is, that's pretty special for us. Again, the archery range, all the materials out there, everything was donated on that range. Everything you see out there was donated. Staff did the grading and construction, things like that, but all the material, so everything what you physically see, has been paid for through donations.
I've used that feature, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
It's very successful, so, good. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike. Next up, we have a resolution accepting a donation from Pet Supply Plus, and we have Chief here to tell us about that.
Thanks. A little more positive presentation this time. Once again, a great example of our community supporting not just the police department, but the city. I've told you many times, you could gain about 30 pounds just by walking through the police department on most days with the snacks and great things that the community does to show us their support. On March 4th, the police department received a $250 donation from Pet Supply Plus. Owners, Dave and Wendy Heather, longtime supporters of the department, but it was actually their employees. I'd like to give a little shout out to Tasha and Johnny who came, stopped by, and they, on their own, took it upon themselves to do a one-day collection for appreciation of their police department day and came up with that $250. So it was placed into our crime prevention donation fund, or I'm asking it to be reappropriated into our crime prevention account for use on crime prevention programs and supplies, and to give a huge thank you to not just Pet Supplies Plus, but the community as a whole.
Motion approved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you to Pet Supplies Plus, the community and Chief. All right, last up, we have the 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Union Local 503, and we have Michelle here to tell us about that.
Hi, good evening. So basically, we met with the dispatcher clerical union, and we settled on the 2%. They've actually already looked at and ratified, and we're looking for you to support that. Any questions? It's pretty simple.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Michelle? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Michelle. All right, with no further business before the Finance Committee, I will adjourn.
And good evening, once again. I'd like to call the order of the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for March 21st. Note that we do have a quorum of all, Alderman President accounted for. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, we would like the United States of America and to the Republic of West Bend, one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Thank you. Looks like we have 16 items on our agenda, the first being approval of the minutes, the Common Council regular meeting minutes for March 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model, and any comments for corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then we'll move on to consent agenda, but I'll pull out item number six, so if I can have motion to consent the rest.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Kaler. All those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then we'll take them number six, which is the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters of the sale of not to exceed $1,225,000 general obligation refunding bond, series 2022B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Butchlick and Model, yes?
And we will be making the correction that was discussed during finance on the 3% as the performative amount.
Correct, thank you. Any further comments? Then all those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. I believe now that's seven to one. Correct, okay. And we'll move on to gen items for consideration. Our first is number nine, appointment of the city clerk. I am going to state that we are unfortunately going to skip this gen item tonight. We are in an aggressive job market as much as anyone, and we'll be going back out for another round of searching. But I want to ensure the community that in the meantime, you know, I have every competence in our chief deputy clerk, and our staff, and our election inspectors to ensure that our spring election is completed successfully, and we look forward to that. And with that, we'll move to number 10, which is an operator's license for Wendy M. Sheehan. The recommendation was to deny.
Motion to deny.
Thank you. That was Butchlick and Kaler. All those in favor of denial, is it a saying aye?
Chris, Mayor, I just said.
I'm sorry, yep.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify one or two things if Chief could.
Yeah.
I know that, I guess I was a little confused with the parole officer talk versus the approval and the denial of the parole officer. I mean, I'm not saying that this is not a serious offense, but it's kind of been this board's overlook over time. If the offense had been, you know, over a year, the first one was 2018, the second one was 2020, it's been almost two years for this young lady. I don't, again, deny that, but my question would be, did you speak with her parole officer? Was this notes from a different officer? Because to me, if her parole officer feels comfortable with her working in a bar/restaurant type of environment, I would feel comfortable now that it's been two years and the way that this board has gone to perhaps allow her to go forward. So I guess I'm just kind of confused if you can clarify that.
Sure. Lieutenant Brian McAndrews, our administrative aide, conducts these background checks. He spoke directly to Kenneth Cannon, who is the supervisor of the, I guess, region that she's under. So the supervisor here in West Bend, I didn't, we didn't speak directly to her parole or probation officer, and I want to say that sometimes maybe bosses don't always know what their employees are doing. However, the supervisor was very clear, because we questioned this after our last time, and he was very clear that they were not waiving any conditions of her probation and that they were opposed to her being granted an operator's license. I mean, he was very clear about that. And asked us to oppose it as well.
And that's the parole officer's supervisor that made that statement, not her parole officer, so maybe that's where the confusion for her is coming in?
Correct, he may be, yes. And I was also a little bit bothered by that and made a note.
Okay.
Myself to talk a little bit further on that, but I know I spoke with Lieutenant McAndrews, I know he was very clear that he spoke with the supervisor who said they weren't waiving it, they didn't want her to get a license, and they would ask that we object to the approval.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification, that makes me feel better, I guess, to understand where the disconnect came from.
And I agree with you, where you look at all of these events and hope people are making a change in their life when probation and parole, the very people who are in charge of kind of tasks, keeping an eye on them, ask us to deny, that's why I'm so strongly in favor of denying that.
I would agree with that. I mean, that's why, to me, it was more about what her probation or parole officer's stance would be if they felt that this was a good way to go for her, because they know her better than this council does, so.
Agreed.
I think that that is a good gauge, so.
Agreed, and that most of our denial is hinged both on her past, but also on their recommendation. I will be having a phone call conversation tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify that.
Do you still want to keep your vote as is?
No, I will vote to deny based on the conversation with the parole officer.
Sounds good. Yes, sir.
Yeah, as I understand it, she even admitted in her statement that while her parole officer wasn't in favor of this, or her probation officer, she still wanted to go ahead because of the opportunity to get into a management position somewhere. So what I heard Ms. Child, or Sheehan, say was that, yes, they weren't in favor of this. Well, they're not only not in favor of it, it's conditioned to maybe send her back to the Crowbar Hotel, because she's not allowed to be where they sell liquor. And the place she's working, there's no clear demarcation between a restaurant area and where the liquor is sold.
I can maybe clarify, I'm sorry. Yeah, clarify a little bit. Her rule is that it's, she's not allowed to work in a establishment whose primary purpose is the sale or distribution of alcohol, included but not limited to bars, taverns, liquor stores, and beer tents. So it being a restaurant, there may be some leeway in that interpretation. I would remind the council, however, that an issuance of a license is not particular to an establishment. If she has a liquor license, she could go anywhere and use that license to serve. So in our heads, we tie it to the restaurant and the business, but if she has a license, she could serve alcohol in any tavern with your blessing. So again, I recommend denial.
Understood. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make a comment. I agree with the no, but her attitude of accusing our police department of carrying out a vendetta just strikes me wrong. If you're going to come in here, we, our police department doesn't carry a vendetta. We are eight individuals up here that can think for ourselves, and we don't always go with your recommendation, but in this case, it's a definite no, but to then say that you have a vendetta against her is, that's not the right way to approach it.
I agree, Alderman Kaler.
I appreciate that. I would agree with you that that's far from the truth, looking for everyone to be productive members of our community within their limits of paying for their past acts.
Agreed. Thank you for those comments. And we'll move on to number 11, 2022 collective bargaining agreement.
Want to actually take a vote on that?
We did, we did, and then we had discussion afterwards.
We had a discussion.
Yeah. We went a little routed, but everybody wanted to change their vote. I heard everybody wanted to deny, right?
Right.
Okay. Now move on to 11, 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Bend and the Dispatchers and Clerical Union of Local 503.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model, and I'll give that to Berquist. Any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 12, a resolution amending the traffic manual for the City of West Bend, and once again, we have the Chief. Take it away.
Thank you. Traffic Safety Commission met February 28th of this year. We reviewed several different items and have two recommendations to bring in front of you. The first is a recommendation that following no parking miscellaneous restrictions be added to section 2.1.1. And that is to add a no parking on the east side of North Main Street from 250 feet north of West Washington Street to 1,060 feet north of West Washington Street from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. This is parking on the east side of North Main along the new development, basically from 7th and Wash to Parkdale Pet, if you're familiar with the area, just south of, I guess, Tucans, a nice reference that we all remember, but on the east side of the road, it's to make it consistent with the downtown parking, and the main reason for, and agreed upon by the developers, I should add. The main reason for that is for snow removal in the winter, as Doug can talk to, speak to if you need to, and maintenance during the summer. It's very consistent with our downtown parking restrictions in place now, and we're looking, I assume, as this development is an extension of our downtown. The, yep, the second one then is, this one's an easy one, as Alderman Kaler can point out, Forge Road, which is by the Milwaukee Tool Development at River Road, looking to put a stop sign westbound, as Alderman Kaler, a member of our commission rightfully pointed out, there seems to be a sign post, stop sign posted on a post already, so just getting it added to the manual, so it's enforceable.
Second.
Thank you, Kaler and Allen. Any questions for the Chief on these? Hearing none, all those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And move to 13, approve an annexation agreement for Shepherd of the Hills for 21.44 acres of land located on the west side of Wildwood Road and north of Schuster Drive. And while presentation, Barb's Development Planner, Jim Recky. Jim?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're asking the council to approve annexation agreement. Shepherd of the Hills has submitted a petition to annex the 21.4 acres of property out off of Wildwood Road and Schuster Drive. This agreement basically covers assessments or payments due for utility, they are utilities, they are requesting the annexation to obtain sanitary sewer. They do have water under agreement already, and this agreement reinforces that agreement for the water service and then also for the services for the sanitary sewer, along with future developments for road dedication. So we would ask that the council consider the annexation agreement prior to the acting on the actual annexation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen, yes.
I just had a quick question, Jim. The community, it's Barton, I believe, is who it is under right now.
Correct.
Does their, has their township of Barton, has the township of Barton expressed any reservations or anything with this change?
They haven't, correct. And as part of the annexation process, they were notified of the lands being detached from them and attached to the city. We've had no contact with anyone from the.
And it's just the church grounds, not homes or anything?
Correct, correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Sounds great. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the annexation, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then tied to that, Alderman Model, you're excited?
More just than seven, you betcha.
Just got a little bit bigger, right? Then we'll move to annexing town of Barton territory, approximately 21.4 acres of land located on the west side of Wildwood Road and north Schuster Drive, Shepherd of the Hills. I don't think we need any more comments, so.
Correct, this is just the ordinance enacting that annexation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, is it a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move on to reports. And we'll move on to reports. First off, is a report by Alderman Allen or Aaron's regarding the Tourism Commission.
Yeah, the Tourism Commission met to consider a proposal for a destination marketing plan for West Bend. This is in conjunction. We had asked the, I, I guess, communications and develop, whatever, the staff, we had asked staff to develop a plan for us. They did. This is to use the grant funds that we receive from the state. The plan is outstanding. We're ready, we approved it and gave the staff the permission to proceed with the thing. They've already done a beta test, as it were, of the, the booths that we'll be able to take out, like to State Fair. And they did that at the home show, and that was well-received and worked out very well. So we're really excited, you know, start looking for West Bend to, to be a destination for things like kayaking, cycling, hiking, enjoying places like Laclara, Laclara and so on, so.
Absolutely. We already know it's a destination, right? But it's telling other people.
We're gonna, we're actually going to be actively marketing this, not to like Washington County as much as all of Wisconsin and surrounding states.
Absolutely. Exciting stuff. Thanks, Jess.
Jess did a great job. Kudos to the, to the staff for putting this together.
Awesome. Any questions for Alderman Allen or Jess? All right. Thank you. Move on to 16, a report by Alderman Model regarding the Community TV Committee.
That whole conversation was a good segue into the, the Community TV department. We did have a committee meeting, and it's a lot of what, what you were talking about, Alderman Allen. It's, it seems like you'd be more appropriately called the Marketing Committee now. But we did, the committee did review the annual report and year and budget. Communications ended the year under budget and increased revenues through special projects, grants, and franchise fees. We also introduced a new member, Jackie Maynard, who's going to be joining our, our committee meetings now. In 2021, Facebook followers exceeded the goal of 20,000. And yesterday, we surpassed 22,000. The 90 public meetings were broadcast in 2021, in addition to 75 sports and special events, 12 Business, Businesses of the Month videos, and four episodes of the city. Communications continued to expand services and program offerings for the city, including the addition of employee recruitment videos and tourism promotion and development. In spring 2022, the team will kick off a visit, a visit West Bend destination marketing campaign, which we saw some, some preliminary stuff with that. It looked really good. Communications assists, communications assists various city departments with grant writing and fundraising efforts. In the last year, the team contributed to securing grants and donations exceeding $4 million, including that one that we just learned about a couple weeks ago. For the second year in a row, the Communications Department has been recognized with five Wisconsin Community Media Midwest Media Fest awards. Thank you for writing that for me, Jess. Good Lord. But John did it again. Great work by media production coordinator, John Elkie. Any questions?
Any questions? Then open up. If there's any other announcements for the go-to-the-order? Seeing none. And having no further business for the Common Council, adjourned by the call of the chair. Have a good night.